Okay, testing, testing. Ponyam check, one, two, three. Ponyam mic check, one, two, three. Manager mic test, one, two, three. Manager mic test, one, two, three. Attorney mic, one, two, three. Testing attorney mic, one, two, three.
Nope, go ahead.
All right. County clerk, I need to get these memorized. County clerk test, one, two, three. County clerk test, one, two, three. Beatty mic, one, two, three. Testing Beatty mic, one, two, three. Howe mic, two. Howe mic test, one, two, three. Howe mic, one, two, three. Meitzner mic, one, two, three. Meitzner mic, one, two, three. Dennis mic, testing, one, two, three. Dennis mic, one, two, three. Lopez mic, testing, one, two, three. Lopez, one, two, three. All right, we got about one minute. Stand by. Forty-five seconds, stand by. Forty-five seconds. Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
Fifteen seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Today, September twenty-seventh, we're finishing up the third quarter. It's nice to have the commission, the five of us together again. It's been a while, and welcome, everybody, that attended today's meeting. With that, we'll call to order the governing body of the Fire District for September twenty-seventh. Madam Clerk?
Invocation to be led by Pastor John Dursow, Calvary Baptist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Lord, we come into your presence as humble servants. I'm so thankful for those in our county who seek to serve the people here. I'm thankful for these commissioners and their desire for growth. I pray that you would grant them wisdom and guidance in the decisions they make for us as constituents. Lord, I pray that you would help them to be fiscally responsible, to be kind, to be gracious to one another, to be unified, and, Lord, we pray that you would just have your will here on this earth as we seek to honor you. I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor John. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to comment on my dear friend, John Dursow. He's a pastor of one of my, actually pastor of my church, and he's a loving, skilled, gracious pastor. I love you, sir. You're a great man. Thank you for taking time to be here with us today, and your prayer was very encouraging, so I just want to say thank you. And this is Calvary Baptist Church in Derby, and John Dursow. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Nicole, welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I am Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. October is Safety Month, and our risk management team does a really great job preparing training each year for our employees during this time. Elizabeth Wingo, our Director of Risk Management, is here to talk more about it.
Good morning, Elizabeth. Welcome to the committee.
Morning. Like Nicole said, I'm Elizabeth Wingo, your Director of Risk Management, and I'm just going to give you kind of some of the highlights of what's coming with Safety Month. This is the second year we've done Safety Month, and it's a targeted month where we roll out some new trainings and really try to remind our employees that safety needs to stay in their front of their minds so they can continue to work safely and go home to their families at the end of the day. So, thank you to Communications for our fun spooky little graphic this year. Safety doesn't have to be scary, and so we have a lot of fun trainings for folks this month. We're starting next week out with defensive driving every single day, and that's taught by risk management. The next week, the week of Columbus Day, we're doing CPR, first aid, and AED training, and this year, that training is being taught by risk management as well. This year, we got three of our staff certified to be Red Cross instructors, so we'll be teaching that and being able to teach more of those classes for staff across the county this next year. The next week, we have courthouse police is doing active shooter awareness training, and the Fire District is teaching Stop the Bleed. And then the last week, the Sheriff's Office is continuing to offer self-defense classes for staff. So, there are still openings in all of those courses for folks who are interested to sign up on E-line, and we would encourage folks to do that. And then we, of course, also have the safety slogan contest, which is an employee favorite we do every year. We ask folks to come up with a fun, creative slogan to keep people encouraged to think about safety throughout the year. That goes on the poster that we'll present to the commission in January. I will stand for any questions.
Okay, yeah. Any questions, comments? Thank you. This is good for the community. Thank you for all you do.
We had a proclamation last week, but we wanted to take a moment to mention that September fifteenth through October fifteenth is National Hispanic American Heritage Month. This month honors the cultures and recognizes generations of Hispanic Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our nation and society. We've compiled a short video highlighting a few of our employees.
I think it's very important to acknowledge it because all the different Hispanic cultures offer something different. Mihabian, Mexican heritage, the language, the arts, the food, the music is all different.
Even though, you know, a lot of people are like, well, all you guys speak Spanish, but that does not mean that we have the same customs, eat the same food. Even in Mexico, the further you go south, you know, the cuisine is way different, customs are different, way of thinking is different. With my parents, we always did like Day of the Dead. We have an altar for our deceased. We put up pictures.
Any chance that we get to celebrate who we are and where we come from is, it's always a lot of fun to continue to learn. My dad dropped out of school in fifth grade to help support his family by picking cotton, and I think about that a lot, and I draw strength from that to see where we're at today because I don't think my grandma would have ever pictured that she would have a grandchild that's in government, let alone an elected official.
My parents, both, both of them, in fact, are immigrants from different parts of the world, and they both came here with the same shared values of hard work, making yourself better, but not just yourself, but your community around you. And I think it's so very important to recognize that and the contributions that so many people made to make this country great.
We have been showing videos individually of all of those folks through our employee bulletin, and then we wanted to give an opportunity for you guys to see that compiled together. We're very excited to have this opportunity to work towards our DEI efforts, and this is one of the many ways we're doing that, and I will stand for any questions.
Okay. Well, that was an impressive list of employees that we're scrolling through alphabetically and a great video. Any other comments or questions? And it was a great celebration a couple weeks ago for the, for the, celebrating the beginning of the month.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Don't see any. All right, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thanks again for all the work. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I don't believe anybody had signed up for the public agenda. Okay, that's confirmed, so we did not have anybody sign up for the public agenda. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of August twenty-third, 2023.
Commissioners, you had a chance to review the minutes of the August twenty-third meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, or comments? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty-third regular meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, resolution reappointing Bob Duel to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission.
Okay. Justin, good morning.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. Chairman, if it's acceptable to you, I'd propose to take items B and C together. And for the record, item C, item B, as the county clerk noted, is the resolution reappointing Bob Duel to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. Item C is the resolution reappointing Hugh Nix to the Metropolitan Planning, Area Planning Commission. The MAPC, as it's known, has fourteen total members, of which the Board of County Commissioners appoints seven. Each county commissioner gets to recommend one appointment, but there are two positions that are at large. These are the two at-large positions. The resolutions that are in front of you reflect resolutions to reappoint Mr. Duel and Mr. Nix to the MAPC. They're recommended for approval by Metropolitan Area Planning Department Director Scott Wadel, and the recommended action is to adopt those resolutions.
Okay, thank you for that presentation summary. Any questions or comments at this time? I don't see any. I will make a motion that we approve items B and C, which are Bob Duel and Hugh Nix.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And Kelly Arnold is here to re swear in Bob Duel.
All right, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Wichita-Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commissioners to help me guide.
I do.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you very much for this honor. It's, truly is an honor to serve the county and the city in the planning commission. It's important work, and I promise to do my best. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis has a comment. Bob, you want to stay here? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And Bob, thank you very much for volunteering to serve again. This is one of the toughest jobs that we appoint anyone to. You not only serve on the Metropolitan Plan Commission, you serve on the either subdivision or advanced plans, you serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and so you've got meetings every week, and some of those meetings are very long. Most of them are fairly contentious, and so we have to have people that actually understand all of the zoning regulations, the comprehensive plan, and are willing to go beyond the call of duty, honestly, on the amount of time that they spend. So, I want to thank you and Hugh for volunteering once again to serve. Thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to echo Commissioner Dennis's comments, and I know Bob and Hugh personally, and they're incredibly men of integrity, honor, and this is, as Commissioner Dennis suggested, this is a big commitment. There's a lot of hours, there's a lot of study, a lot of work that's being done, and to know that we have people of the caliber of Bob and Hugh that are in these positions that are doing this on a volunteer basis, we should be proud as a community. You continue to step up over and over and over again. Rosie would appreciate it if you would retire and travel a little bit more, but you keep answering the call, and you keep serving this community in ways that we're incredibly grateful for. So, Bob and Hugh both, Hugh isn't here today, he was in Kansas City today, but if you'll pass those along, those comments along to him, we're really grateful for all the service you give to this community.
Well, I'm humbled. Thank you.
And Bob, I echo the comments, and you and Bob and Hugh Nix are great assets to our community, and you bring a lot of value to that, to that committee. We do a lot of appointments, and these are, these are very, this one is very important, and we're glad that you're willing to serve again. So, thanks again.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Any others? Okay.
Just echo the comments. You know, I've known Bob a very, very long time, and he's very thoughtful and logical in his thinking, and I just think he's a perfect person for this appointment. And again, I would say what Commissioner Beatty said, huge commitment, and considering someone so skilled as yourself was willing to invest that kind of time, I just want to say thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, Bob. Have a great day and good to see you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, resolution reappointing Jesse Keely, William Lowenstein, Scott Smith, and Randy Freeman to the Wichita Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Board of Appeals of Air Conditioning, Refrigerator, and Warm Air Heating.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman. The item D that's in front of you, this resolution, or it's actually a series of four different resolutions, would be reappointing four members to what's colloquially called the Mechanical Board. This board is a joint board between the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County that considers amendments to codes that apply to the mechanical, mechanical trades within Sedgwick County and the city of Wichita. They also handle certain appeals that are identified within that code. More specifically, Mr. Jesse Keely is for the journeyman mechanic position. William Lowenstein is the master warm air and heating contractor position. Or, I'm sorry, Scott Smith would be the mechanical engineer position, and then Randy Freeman would be the joint at-large position. It's both appointed by the Board of County Commissioners and the city councils. My understanding, that's going to the city council sometime in October. The recommendation here is from Chris Labrin as MABCD Director to reappoint all four of these people, and the recommended action is to adopt those four resolutions.
Thank you, Justin, and I know that Chris Labrin had sent information about this recommendation to all of us, and so we all had a chance to review. And any other comments? I'll make a motion that we approve all four of these persons.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And I don't know if any of them are here to be sworn in. No. And Chris, thanks for your work on this. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item E, resolution reappointing David Urban, Duane Schneider, Christopher Vale, and Steve Vossman to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Board of Electrical Appeals.
Okay. Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman. This resolution is very similar to the last one. Just, this is for the electrical board, and the, again, they're a joint, a seven-member joint board between the county and the city of Wichita. More specifically, Mr. Urban would be reappointed to the journeyman electrical position, electrician position. Duane Schneider would be the master electrician position, Christopher Vale, electrical engineer position, and Steve Vossman to the joint at-large position that's appointed between the county and the city. These, all of four of these These, all of four of these folks are recommended for reappointment by Chris Labrum, and the recommended action is to adopt the resolutions.
Okay. Similar to the previous, Chris had a, Mr. Labrum had a chance to review all these names with us, and we had a chance to visit. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any, so I make a motion that we approve item E, which is the four, four people to this electrical appeals board.
Second.
Motion and a second. No other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And are any of them here, Chris, to be sworn in? Nope. Okay. Motion carries. Next item, please.
New business. Item F, consideration of a grant in the amount of $256,837.20 from Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services for IDD Crisis Stabilization.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeanette Graham, Sedgwick County Department of Aging and Disabilities. In the 2023 session, the Kansas Legislature allocated $2 million to improve IDD services and response statewide. They then, K-Dads then issued a request for proposals for qualified IDD organizations to develop and implement customized community-based provider support service models for Medicaid waiver participants with IDD and co-occurring complex behavioral health issues. The Sedgwick County Developmental Disabilities Organization is partnering with our affiliate network of IDD providers to bring an enhanced crisis stabilization service to the Sedgwick County IDD system. Our proposed project will include multidisciplinary crisis plan development for individuals with IDD, specialized additional training and funding for providers to appropriately serve individuals having a behavioral health crisis. The grant will also fund a consultation contract with the National Center for START. That stands for Systemic Therapeutic Assessment Resources and Treatment. START is an evidence-based community crisis prevention and intervention service model. START is, is the national standard for effective IDD crisis stabilization services and is currently in 11 states. The state of Kansas has indicated interest in implementing START statewide in the future. Consultation with START would prepare Sedgwick County for rapid implementation of the model and guide development and enhancements of other crisis stabilization services for individuals with IDD in our area. Goals for the project include more effective IDD crisis stabilization services that reduce unnecessary hospitalization and arrest. Project services will work to stabilize individuals with IDD in crisis and assess the need for referrals to other community services. The term of this grant is October 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. So you can see it is a short-term model and a grant. The request is for $256,837.20. The funds will be used for contractual services. Additional budget authority is requested, and there is no match required for this.
Okay.
Yes.
No, go ahead.
Okay. The recommended action is to approve the grant contract and authorize acceptance of the grant contract, authorize the chairman to sign all necessary documents, authorize establishment of budget authority until the conclusion of the grant term, and allow for remaining balance at the end of the calendar year to be established in the next fiscal year through June 30th, 2024. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thanks for the presentation. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeanette, thank you for bringing this to us. This is an opportunity to help those that are most vulnerable in our community, and I applaud you for the work there. Couple of quick questions. Starkey has come to all of us and asked for some additional funding. Will any of this $256,000 help with some of the needs that Starkey is facing?
This is different than what Starkey is proposing, which is additional reimbursement salary for their specialized staff. This would complement that in that it would provide some very specialized training for targeted case managers and direct service workers, but it really doesn't, it's not the same as what he's requesting, but it is additional training for our service provider network. And we did, staff did pull together a focus group and brought in community affiliates and partners to ask them what their thoughts were, what they thought their needs were. So this really is very stakeholder-driven and really engaged with the network because we're here to support them with this.
Okay, so the grant came down with specific things we could use it for, or did we go out and ask the, our providers what they needed?
It was for a community crisis stabilization, so it had a kind of a general kind of process with some generalized goals. But then the goal, the proposals were to be developed and implemented at a community-based level. So every community is different, so it really is pulling those community members together to see what the identified needs are and where they're seeing the gaps and where they could benefit from this plan.
Okay, so, so this grant doesn't help us at all on the waitlist either, the nine years or so it takes to get services for individuals?
No, this does not address the waiting list. It really is for those more complex behaviors and those individuals in our community that are having more hospitalization, emergency room visits, more interaction, interface with the law enforcement and arrest and jails. So it really is to address those complex and the complex behaviors and those with behavioral health needs.
Yeah, well, keep your eyes open for anything that we can do to help Starkey, anything we can do to reduce the waitlist. We're going to have it, I'm sure, on our legislative agenda again this year to work the waitlist that we ask every year, and we never get anywhere, but we'll keep asking.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. Jeanette, thank you for the presentation, and I'm grateful for the opportunity with this grant. Kind of a comment, and I'd be open to your comments as well. There's been some discussion with the commission and those at Starkey and you and Tim about this complex situation dealing with those with dual diagnosis, those that are, you know, intellectually developmental disabled, this group of individuals, also those with a diagnosed mental health condition. I was reading in the backup that the capacity report showed 1,203 individuals in Sedgwick County with one or more co-occurring behavioral health diagnosis. So things on the list such as bipolar disorder, generalized anxiety disorder, major depressive disorder. This dual diagnosis conversation is, what makes this so complex in servicing these individuals? Is it the lack of trained individuals? Is it, are we trying to mix things that we do, such as calm care and Starkey and catch? I mean, this is, this seems to be a really complex situation, and just be interested into your comments as to how we move this thing forward.
And I'm going to answer you, but I've got Jeanette Livingston here, and if she wants to add to it. So it is a very complex kind of intersection there with IDD and mental health issues. And part of it, you hit on the nail, is the lack of specialized trained staff, because it really does take some very specialized skills and specialized training to really deal with the population. And, you know, some of the, some of the individuals with that co-occurring are also non-verbal. So that really, you know, how do you provide a mental health service to that population? And how do you approach that? And, and part of, one of the things we want to do with this grant is really to bring in some of that specialized training. This is one component, it's one little component to help address those complex behaviors. But there are more things that need to happen. There are more things that need to happen to get clinicians interested and then find that training, to get them trained in working with this specialized population, because it is some specialized skill sets and knowledge. And I don't know if Jeanette might have something else to add to that.
I appreciate those comments. Very good.
I think Jeanette hit the nail on the head about the specialized training, but one of the things I want to emphasize with the consultation that we've built into the grant was we are fortunate to have a, a pretty robust system to help folks with mental illness. And we, we have ICT One, and we have a mobile crisis unit. So we have resources to help folks in mental health crisis. How do we look at those and also make sure that they are appropriate and work well for folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities? And so that will be part of this grant as well.
Yeah, very good. Well, I appreciate those comments, appreciate this grant and this opportunity, and I appreciate the direction and the attention that my colleagues and your staff and those that we are servicing in the community and our providers in the community, and that they brought this to the attention of people that need to make decisions in this space, and there's awareness in this area, and there's traction in this area. So I look forward to this year working on some of these things with you.
Okay. And Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. So this is a new grant we've never had before, correct?
Correct.
So this is only a nine-month grant. It concerns me. What happens at the end of nine months? We don't know.
Well, that, that is a topic of discussion at INRAB, our state association, and talking about, okay, so this is, we're kind of looking at it as a pilot project, right? Because it's only nine months, so there will be a lot of activity and advocacy going for continuation of train, of funding for, I mean, the state recognizes statewide that this is an issue, that complex, that intersection, and really tried, there's a lot of work groups and a lot of activity going on around the IDD and the waivers and waiver services and additional ideas for funding. So that, that would be, yeah, that's a question, but we will continue to work on trying to make sure that additional funding continues to be poured into this topic.
In this particular case, we didn't actually apply for this, it sounds like the state offered us the grant initially.
We, we are applying for it. They put a request for proposal. They were, however, very interested in Sedgwick County applying for that, and in fact, they did extend the deadline for us to apply for it. So, yeah, they're very interested.
Does K-Dads expect us to have some type of reportable back to the state on how this money was utilized? We have a reporting, a reporting requirement back to the K-Dads to?
Yes, there will be a report back. We have expected measurable outcomes that we have indicated. A primary outcome of the grant project will be improved behavioral health crisis stabilization services through the formalized evidence-based process and increased staff education. We do expect to see a reduction in unnecessary behavioral health hospitalizations and arrests, so we'll be tracking that.
Good. I, I think that might be interesting for us to see that report at the end of this period. I just think it'd be good to see how this money was used. Again, considering it's just nine months, do we actually have time to ramp up and actually spend these funds effectively in such a short timeframe?
We will be ready to hit the road once we get the, the contract back from the state. There is some concern there because we do know that the state often takes a while to get the contracts through. But, you know, I think staff have done a good job of kind of getting things in place, and they have this kind of a timeline for what they will get started first, and so we, we are hopeful that we'll be able to.
And this was legislative action, is what you said, it was in their fiscal budget?
Yes, the legislature did lash, in the 2023 legislature.
I guess just a point, a point to note here, their fiscal year, fiscal year starts July 1st, and here we are, starting the grant usage on October 1st. I don't know why they delay, but one more thing that's interesting about this, you said it was only $2 million for the entire state of Kansas. We have about one-sixth of the state's population, but we, we're not getting one-sixth of the state's allocation. We're only getting basically the $256,000, one-sixth of the state's allocation would be $333,000. I'm curious, how was this number determined? And do we have an argument that says we should deserve a slightly higher share of this fund?
It was an, an application process, and as you've indicated, it's a very short time period, so we wanted to be realistic in what we could achieve. And, yeah, you could have applied for more, but it's going to be such a quick turnaround in a short timeframe that we really wanted to do something that was doable, something that we thought we really could achieve and get some results from.
My final question would be this, if we don't, we don't actually use all the money, so we have to return unused funds back to the state for reallocation maybe in a future year or something, but we have to spend the money on this, and if we don't spend it all, we have to return the leftover.
That's correct.
Okay. And then I'll just say this, I do support this, I'm grateful for the help. I think there's a huge need in our community, and I appreciate the state offering this. I, I have a lot of questions, but I, obviously, this is a step in the right direction, so thank you for bringing this to us. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. I don't see any other questions or comments. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item G, adoption of a new general pay compensation plan.
Okay. Good morning, Miss Manager, Tom Stoltz.
Chairman, Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office. On August 23rd of this year, the Board of County Commission approved a 2024 budget, and within that adoption was the general pay plan for which this item is discussing today. We, we refer to it as the Evergreen Study or the Evergreen Plan as we were working through the year, which includes a modified grade status and compensation for general pay plan employees who did not receive any specific pay plan attention in the previous year. That involves roughly 1,400 of our county employees, about half the, half the county force. The ask for today is to move forward with this plan implementation, the Evergreen Plan implementation, early before end of year, and to implement it effective November 5. And there's two main reasons for this ask. Number, number one is logistics and operations. This would allow, this early implementation would allow payroll staff and HR to get this data entered into the pay system before the end of the year, and other general pay adjustments and the new FIRE plan go into effect on January 1. The second is just a fairness question. When we implemented the new pay plans last year, we implemented all of them early in the fiscal year, and we would like to treat these employees in that same manner. So that's just a fairness and equity issue. The fiscal note to this request is a little over $1 million, $1,22,124 by estimate today. Our current fiscal estimates show enough 2023 salary savings to pay for this, and if not, the commission has at its disposal a compensation contingency which could shore this up. This way, these employees also will then receive a 3% adjust on January 1. We will implement our new FIRE pay plan on January 1, and those areas that are step raise oriented, which is now the sheriff and EMS in addition to FIRE, will receive their steps plus a 2% adjust at the beginning of the year, and that summarizes our compensation. So the ask today is to let us move forward with this component early, and then we'll, we'll roll with the rest of the compensation on January 1.
Okay. I know we've reviewed this a lot and had a lot of dialogue about it. Is there any other questions or comments at this time? Commissioner Lopez?
I just have one question. What's the, how much do we have in salary savings now? If this is a little over a million, I don't know if I've seen that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Poso, your CFO. So we typically, it depends on the department, and it depends on the fund, but overall, between all of the various funds, we typically project to have around $10 million of remaining salary saving dollars in aggregate across the organization. A lot of that is in grant funds, but there's a good chunk as well within your general fund. And so if you, within your backup, there's a table, the actual impact overall is $1 million, but we're only expecting about a $750,000 impact to our county property tax-supported funds, and that's been anticipated in every forecast that you've seen since May. So we don't expect this to have any further detrimental impact to anything that you've seen on the forecast side either.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? I don't see any, so I will make a motion to adopt the new general pay compensation plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions being done? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty,
Aye.
Commissioner Howell,
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thanks for all the hard work, H R Group, and all the management of the employees and finance, too. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on September 21, 2023.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lee Barrier, Purchasing Department. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of September 21, 2023 resulted in four items that we are seeking for your approval. Number one is laboratory and safety supplies, various departments. We recommend to utilize the State of Kansas contract, number 50622, with Fisher Scientific Company LLC. And that contract is good through August 31, 2024. Item number two, management information systems for older Americans nutrition programs. This is through the Department on Aging. And this item is going to be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. We recommend to accept the proposal from Monami Incorporated in the amount of $75,000 for a term of three years. Item number three is our on-call S A P finance and controlling services for enterprise resource planning. We recommend to accept the quote from Labyrinth Solutions Incorporated at the rates provided for a term of one year with four one-year options to renew. And number four is our pre-employment screening and on-call laboratory services for human resources. We recommend to accept the proposal from National Screening Bureau, D B A National Screening Bureau LLC, at the rates provided for a term of three years with two one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these four items.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Any questions on these items? I don't see any. Make a motion to approve the report of the board and bids from our, on the September 21 meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. No other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez,
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis,
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty,
Aye.
Commissioner Howell,
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you again for all the work you all do. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good morning, again. Commissioner and Chairman, Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items I through U. I'm going to call out items L and Q only because they have seven figures of money attached to it. Item L is a grant for the Department of Aging and Disability Services from the Older American Act grant to the tune of almost $4 million, $3,888,000. And item Q is a Health Department grant for the Women, Infants, and Children program. So both of these grants are good news for Sedgwick County residents. I just wanted to call those out and ask for your approval of the consent items today.
Okay. Any questions or comments on any of the consent items? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve items on the consent item I through U.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez,
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis,
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty,
Aye.
Commissioner Howell,
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And if we can, we will recess the board meeting and we will call to order the, the meeting of the Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez,
Present.
Commissioner Dennis,
Present.
Commissioner Beatty,
Present.
Commissioner Howell,
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Nobody signed up for public agenda on the Fire District. So next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, fire meeting minutes of August 23, 2023.
Commissioners, you've had a chance to review the fire meeting minutes of August 23. Is there any questions or comments? I don't see any. So Madam, make a motion to approve the minutes of August 23.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez,
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis,
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty,
Aye.
Commissioner Howell,
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
New business. Item B, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on September 21, 2023.
Good morning again. Lee Barrier, Purchasing Department. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of September 21, 2023 for Fire District One resulted in one item that requires your approval. Item one is the current model four-wheel-drive dual rear-wheel standard cab flatbed truck for Fire District One. We recommend to accept the low bid from One Nation Distribution LLC in the amount of $74,440. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of this item.
Okay. Are there any questions? I don't see any. I will make a motion to approve the board of bids for the Fire District.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez,
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis,
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty,
Aye.
Commissioner Howell,
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Lee, thanks for the presentations. You really, you established a bar that now Joe's going to have to try to go by. So, thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Other.
Does anybody have any other on the Fire District? Don't see any. Next item?
Executive session.
There is no executive session. So we will adjourn the governing body of Fire District Number One, and we'll call back to order the Board of County Commission meeting. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Committee reports. Anybody have any reports down the committees they serve on? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Yesterday, we had the board meeting for the Sedgwick County Zoo. Couple things. Wildlights are coming back this year. We kind of saw a little preview of them as they were moving in yesterday. It is bigger and better than ever. It's going to run November 11 through December the 17. And the theme this year is Alice in Wonderland. So it's a whole new theme. So I recommend everyone make sure you get your tickets early and go see Alice in Wonderland at Wildlights. The other thing is, we just had Zubelee, and it was a success. There were 6,296 people attended Zubelee, which is a fantastic number. The silent auction gained $102,075. One of the items up for auction was either an Army plaque, which was gorgeous, or a Marine plaque, which was gorgeous, neither one of which I bid on, because they did not have an Air Force plaque. So I asked them next year, make sure you have an Air Force plaque. The other thing is that right now, it looks like the total revenue from Zubelee is going to be just over a million dollars. So again, it was a very successful event. I want to thank everyone that worked very, very, very hard to make that a successful event. It took the entire zoo staff to make that happen. But it took the community also. Also, Lynn Packer is still in the room. I asked him if, first of all, thank you, Lynn, for holding up on closing the bridge until after Zubelee. We appreciate that very much because we were able to get people in and out of there. Right now, it's, the bridge isn't affecting too much on the attendance. The thing that they've noticed is that people are turning off of 21st Street Zoo Boulevard and cutting through the zoo in order to be able to bypass your barricades that you've got at the end of the light. And I noticed as I was leaving, people are not driving slowly through there. So we may have to talk to the sheriff or Public Works or someone to kind of slow the traffic down because they're now using that as a major road rather than as a parking area. So it was just, they didn't indicate, the zoo didn't indicate any problem. But as I was trying to get back out onto that little path, I had to wait a while because the traffic was moving very rapidly. So just something to think about for the future. They also appreciate the fact that the bike path is still open underneath the bridge. So thank you for that. So those are the things that came up in the board of directors meeting yesterday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to congratulate Exploration Place for an incredible weekend, last weekend, with their drone light show. Commissioner Lopez and I brought all, I don't know, all 30 of our children out and, and joined 4,000 people on the night we were there. I think we were Friday night. We were there on Friday night, and 4,000 people were there in attendance, all along the shore of the river. These guys put on a show. And if you haven't been to the drone show, this light show, or if you haven't seen the pictures, it's the most exhilarating fireworks show that you're going to see, really. I mean, it's, the images, the technology, it was, it was just, it was incredibly inspiring to come together as a community like that. And there was so much joy, so much energy in the room. And E P knows how to throw a good party. So I had a chance to talk to Adam and some of his board members yesterday to congratulate them. But publicly, I just wanted to say that just how impressive it really was. And a real gem in this community, what Exploration Place is doing. So congratulations to them. And it was a wonderful, wonderful weekend.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez, is that you're on that?
Thank you, Commissioner Beatty. I was going there. So now, thank you for saying how much you enjoyed it because it really was a spectacular event for our community. And we were wanting to hit 10,000 people to attend. We surpassed that. So it was a successful event. I'm really happy about the zoo, too. So both the zoo and Exploration Place, which is our, our gems in this community, that Sedgwick County gets to be a part of, both had really successful events. So proud of the work that's going on in both. Thank you.
Okay. Any other under committee reports? I don't see any. We receive and file. And so next item, please.
Other.
Other. Does this, Commissioners, have anything under other? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Again, blurring the lines between committee reports and other. Appreciate the comments about Exploration Place. That is very exciting for our community. Last Friday was a big day for Sedgwick County. We had three events I thought were worthy of noteworthy things. Number one, we had the 80th, 80th year celebration of Plant Two at Spared Air Systems. It used to be Boeing. That has produced incredible number of airplanes. I just wanted to highlight that because it's such a big part of our community. They had well over 30,000 employees years ago. I would argue that this plant actually was critical in winning World War II. And so the historic importance of this plant is duly noted. They're also celebrating 12,000th delivery of 737 airplane, and that is an incredible milestone in and of itself. And so I just wanted to congratulate Spared Air Systems and really this community for such a great partnership with the aviation community and the things that have happened out of that building there on Oliver. And by the way, it's in my district, so I'm so grateful for that. Second of all, I wanted to talk about the fire graduation. We had some graduates last week, last Friday, to graduate from our fire school. And so I want to welcome them to our team. Appreciate the fact that they are a part of our county organization. Congratulations to them. And then I also wanted to highlight the Veterans Treatment Court, which we celebrated last Friday. I'd like to recognize Commissioner David Dennis and really, I think, other Commissioners as well. But David Dennis, I think, was amongst the Commissioners, was one of our leaders that really pushed forward to make this happen. Again, he's also a veteran. So the reality is, seeing a Veterans Treatment Court, which has worked very well in other communities, is great to have that actually open and working here in Sedgwick County. And so this is going to save taxpayer money. It's a much more effective program to, to these veterans that have been adjudicated and have penalties. But this reduces recidivism, and it's much better for the people going through the, through the program than being incarcerated. So thank you to all those that made Veterans Treatment Court come together. And a couple of other little things, we want to just, I want to recognize Tanya Cole was celebrated. We celebrated her yesterday. Maybe other Commissioners would want to comment on that as well. But Wichita Business Journal highlighted her as one of the women in business for this community. She is an outstanding person in our, in our organization. I will say thank you to Tanya personally. I think she is incredible in her skill set. And her presentation yesterday was just, I think we should show that basically here at one of these points because she is such a great person. And her background is extremely interesting. And because she's on travel, her did, her daughter did accept that, that award on behalf of, on behalf of her mother. So Pepe did a great job. But anyway, Tanya Cole is to be celebrated. She is a wonderful person on our staff. And I wanted to say also, next, actually, Friday this week, I had scheduled a coffee, but I have to cancel that because I have a conflict. And I will be touring at the Air Force Base instead. So I will not be able to do a coffee this Friday. So if anybody was planning to come to that, please know it's canceled. And then finally, one, something we do each and every year, I think most Commissioners attend this, it's great networking, but more importantly, it helps us understand what's happening in the world economy, the nation's economy, and our local economy. That's the Economic Outlet Conference. It's going to be happening next Thursday. If anybody's not aware of this, it is a tremendous opportunity to know what's going on. And Jeremy Hill with Wichita State University and other speakers do a great job helping us understand what's happening in the economy. Of course, the uncertainty in the economy is a big concern, I think, of most of us. And it's hard to predict what's happening and why, but they do a great job. So I think we, many of us probably do a plan to attend that next Thursday. I want to say thank you for the, those that put that together because I always look forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you for that summary. Appreciate you covering the, the spirit celebration and the Veterans Treatment Court. I'll just add that at the Veterans Treatment Court, it was humbling for me to help introduce and welcome everybody. And what I failed to mention is, as I heard the others speak afterwards, and I wish I could have spoke to this, but, because they talked about the team effort to get this done at the right time and, and to do it right and to be efficient. And, and our county commission was a part of that timing in that we agreed to vacate our offices and the other offices that were non-judicial in nature, and to come to this building and actually free up that building so this Veterans Treatment Court could be executed in a, in a proper and a, in a good way. And I wish I could have recognized that and thank each of the Commissioners for supporting that process of vacating that building and turning it into court. So I just want to, again, thank you all for being supportive of that. And on the, on the spirit thing, I thought it was very interesting. Tom Gentelli does a great job of presenting. And they handed us, handed us out a brochure. And he went through the history of the 80 years of Plant Two. And of course, in World War II, it was 35,000 employees at one time. And it also was one of the, one of the original operations in our country to, because the men were fighting and to do a female workforce. And so the female, it was, I think he said, like 90% of that 35,000 were females at the time. And it was the first time, quote, Rosie the Rivet and, and all that. And they handed us out a color brochure. And I just thought, I caught a picture of one of them. And in the corner of the brochure, it was about an eight-page brochure. It had all kinds of data and facts and pictures and historically. But at the, at the bottom corner of one was a, was a picture of three ladies at a water cooler. And one of them's doing like this. And, and the sign there above the water cooler says, please be careful of your language. There may be gentlemen present. So I thought that was a nice touch for, for that. So, and anyway, so I'm just adding to Commissioner Howell's comments about the spirit and the Veterans Treatment Court. The other thing is that I attended the Midwest Interstate Passenger Rail Commission meeting last week. That's why we delayed that last week's meeting to this week, one of the reasons. And anyway, it's, it's a group of nine states that talk interstate and interconnection of passenger rail. And it kind of gets a lot of, a lot of inquiries from, from the public here locally because, as you know, we're trying to connect Oklahoma City to, to Newton to join the Southwest Chief. And just to let you all know, we do have a, an F R A, Federal Rail Administration was there, Amtrak was there, members of the host railroads were there. It's always a good, a good day and a half of meetings. KDOT, Kansas Department of Transportation, does have an application pending with F R A for, to be recognized as in the corridor ID program. It's a large step. They, F R A indicated they are going to announce the award ease in November, which is just two months away. So we feel good that if that connection from Oklahoma City to Newton is approved as a corridor ID, then KDOT, along with ODOT, Oklahoma, and TexDOT, Texas, we will formally apply the updated service development plan, which will show the true costs of the capital cost to finish that connection and the operating costs and operating revenue. That'd be the next step that'll happen at the first quarter of 2024. So I just wanted to update and thank you. And part of our fees that each state pays to this organization also helps pay for the travel and the, and the expenses of, of attending that conference. So it's, it was covered under the, under the state participation fee. So it did not cost us, as a county, to, to attend this. So I just thought I'd update everybody on that. It was, it was very positive for our future of not only hearing Sedgwick County, but help upgrade the, the resume of our, of Kansas in the, in the passenger rail footprint. So that's my updates. We had a number of them. Anybody else have anything else? Ted? Okay. I don't believe so. Next, next item, please.
Executive session.
We do not have an executive session today. So, next item. Well, so is anything else need to come before the Board of County Commissioners this morning? We are three minutes before 10 o'clock. I don't know what the record is, but this is a good meeting. And again, thanks for everybody being back together. And we finished September, and we will start the fourth quarter of 2023, next week. So with that, we will be adjourned.